This is the regular work session, five o'clock for September 20th of the City Council of Minnetrista. I'm just going to quickly do kind of a roll call. We have with us this evening and participating in the meeting is Chief of Police Paul Falls, Community Development Director David Abel, Finance Director Brian Grimm, City Administrator Mike Barone. I'm Lisa Whalen. I'm the Mayor and Council's President. Our Pam Mortensen, John Schumberlin, Ann McGregor, Kathleen Refkin, and we have Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters and Director of Administration Ellie Poulos. We have five items, four items, budget discussion, a gun range discussion, the broadband discussion and update, and then hopefully we'll have some time for the Susan Lane CUP discussion. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Brian for the budget. We're going to start with budget.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So the first like 16 pages of the packet deal with the budget, and I'll probably just highlight the memo here and just pick up where we left off at the August 16th work session. As far as the general fund, I think there seemed to be a pretty good consensus from the 8/16 meeting, so I just reattached the general fund summary. We had seen, or the detail had been provided at the first two meetings, or the two meetings in August. As far as the CIP equipment summary and detail, that was updated to move the fuel management system to 2023, partially because of cost and partially just maybe do a little more digging into that item. So that's what the recommendation is there. As far as the levy option there, number three, it's pretty similar to what was provided, or it is the same gross levy as August 16th. The only thing we did get our fiscal disparities number from the county, which came in slightly less by about a few thousand dollars less than what had been estimated. So that has a slight change, and the net levy goes up by .05% to like 4.52% to exact. So that's that. And then the last item there, it was probably the biggest discussion item at the August 16th meeting, was the road fund balance spreadsheet. And then the, what was attached this time that was, I guess, new or updated was the road overlay plan spreadsheet, and that is on page 16 of the packet. I don't know if anyone has any questions or wants to maybe jump to that road overlays sheet, seeing that was pretty much the main piece of new information from last time.
Brian, just a quick question. You mentioned this last time, but what was the new home growth approximately? Was it 3.?
Yeah, about 3.4. It was almost like 3.5%.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so basically with the, yeah, it was in the low threes. Yeah, it was, I don't, yeah, the exact was right around there, but so ultimately the growth, you know, with 4.5% increase is taking the majority of the increase. Some of the slides that were shown in August showed that pretty much most existing properties, if they had the average valuation increase, are going to see pretty flat or slight increase to their city taxes, but not much of a change at all.
And our tax rate is actually going down?
Correct. Our tax rate is going down because our valuations have gone up about 7, 7.5% with about the new growth being about 3 to 3.5, and then the other being on existing properties. Correct.
Okay. Questions on that?
I just want to follow up, and I should have called you today on this, but the Mayor and John and I, we all wanted to have an extra $100,000 into the road payment thing. Remember that discussion?
Well, I think it was...
And you were stunted somehow it was going to be 50, something like 50. Is it all built in here now?
No, I mean, if the council wants to levy an additional 50 or 100,000, that's their prerogative. I think what the crux of the discussion on August 16th is how much money do we need to do the overlays that we should be doing in 2022? And I think on page 16, when Gary Peters and Allison Fousky and Mike and myself sat down and on that page 16 in the packet, sort of more outlined, sort of the next couple few years and what projects should be, you know, done in a good...
For overlays.
For overlays. So I think, I think some of the confusion from the August 16th meeting was, do we have enough money in there with the levy that we were proposing at the time? And I think there got to be a little bit more of, are we going to start doing Hunter's Crest in 2022? And I think when we really looked at it, I think, and reevaluated, more put, we've gotten the preliminary ratings in, you know, from the road rating program, so some more information came in to be able to see maybe, yeah, enchanted area that's on that sheet should be first, and then probably after that, you got painters and hunters and stuff. And just being able to have that additional information. I don't think an extra 50 or 100,000 is going to get us anything of substance in 2022, because you're not going to be able to just pick out a few streets in an area and say, hey, let's do these. I, I mean, if you want to, we can add in additional funds, but I think the levy presented at the 4.5% is going to be what we need for roads and the other components of our budget. I guess Gary can answer questions too.
Okay, hold on. Before I ask, I want Gary to talk, but before that, so when we get this updated report on the roads, next meeting, this is all going to agree, and that we don't need an extra 100,000 in the fund.
Correct. At this point, what we discussed at our, on a staff level was, you know, what do we need right now with the budget that we're at?
Yeah.
You know, for money wise, what can we do with that? So anything above and beyond that's extra, we talked about putting, you know, towards next year's.
Okay, so was there not going to be any surprises October 4th, right?
Should be. I mean, I've seen the report, excuse me, and I went through everything, and that's where I came up with these numbers, and so everything's kind of transposed into here, so.
One other thing to probably point out is, I've referenced page 16, which is the actual sheet, but right before that, on page 15, is that this was a similar spreadsheet but updated to what was provided at the 8/16 meeting. And some of those line items, those couple line items that have asterisks are just the projected prepaid assessments, so we really don't know exactly what we're going to get for prepaid assessments until for this year, November 1st, and then even the following year, November 1st, on our Jennings project. So, I mean, if we get, so right now, we're leaving a projected at the bottom of that sheet, about 226,000. That would be at the end of 2022, but that's based on some estimates as far as how quickly the assessment revenue comes in. So that's where, I guess, I feel comfortable with the levy as is versus, I don't think we need another 50 or 100% up or down or either way. I think, I think where we're at is a good spot to be.
So your estimate, though, is based on the average percentage of people that pay, and then you apply that percentage to what the assessed, total assessment was?
Yeah, for basically the flooring, hardscrabble, Stonebridge Minneapolis projects this year, then the Jennings next year, pretty much use that 35% of people prepaid in the last few projects, or 30, 40%, whatever it was. So that's what I used, correct?
I agree with the assessment now that you've got it broken down here, and you've added in the overlays, then obvious, well, I shouldn't say obvious, numbers always move, but we look good for 2022. I think my concern was if we had some additional money that we could, maybe not levy, because I also talked at a $50,000 level of just taking it out of the surplus, and we'd still be slightly over 50% of having that available, but it'll be available next year as well. What we don't know is what in 2023 are going to be our reclaims. Back in, a year ago in September, we had this spreadsheet that listed out, you know, at that time it was Sunnyfield and Hardscrabble and all of those, and they were listed A, B, C, D, E. And on that yet, we still have Eastview, Westwood, Morningview, and those all add up to being over a million bucks based on 2020 numbers. So my concern was, so we got 226,000 left theoretically at the end of 2022, and then in 2023, we'll have more levied numbers coming in, another 850 or 900,000. That puts us over a million, but if our potential reclaims or rebuilds for 2023 are already at a million, potentially, I was just looking at, if we can add something now, it might be better to have it here.
Do small, a few small incremental versus in '23, a big jump.
Right, yeah, it's ease it in here, because looking at the overlays just projecting out, I mean, all of them are at 400,000 or greater if these numbers, you know, if we followed this sheet. So there's some big numbers out there, and I just don't want to get blindsided down the road. That's kind of what's happened to us from a few years back, that we probably weren't real proactive on trying to stay on top of the road. So I'm not professing to increase the levy, although I was thinking about it earlier today, 50 out of surplus and 50 more in the levy, but, you know, I don't want to be hitting the levy any more than necessary either.
Well, what I was saying is, at the last meeting, is let's add a little bit, I don't want to say cushion, but let's add a little more in the roads now, then in October, I think they're bringing back the other, the other discussion. Then we'll know we'll have a little bit better. We can always ratchet it back to either none, or 50, or whatever, but then at least we're not, we're not behind the eight ball, we're ahead of the game.
So you're proposing adding it to the levy now, and in December, we could always back off?
You can always back off, but you can't do it the other way around.
Right, I understand, and I wouldn't have a problem with that.
I mean, I want to look at it seriously. I don't want to just say, let's put it in, but I want to put it in there so we have some options for '22 or '23. I don't know.
No, I agree. Stick to, stick to, stick to it.
Yeah.
So just a comment to Mayor and Council on the overlay page that you see. So as mentioned a couple times already, there will be a more detailed look at all the street projects, kind of a street by street, ratings on a street by street, all that kind of stuff. For the purposes of our meeting tonight, what we did when we met last week and the week before about this was to try to make that less cumbersome or hard to understand what the overlays were all about. I mean, we've had sections, Gary had sections, the street by streets had sections, but we thought we'd give you a game plan, and we gave you our recommendation essentially within this game plan by looking at the enchanted island areas, we're calling it, in '22, and the painter's road area in '23. List the streets, list the costs, they were very similar, within $10,000. The deciding factor essentially to make the 2022 project what it was, was the fact that we think it was built in '73, could have been a little sooner, maybe a little later, but pretty old compared to the '93 project on Painter's. So, and then we know all those other ones, they are a little newer, not a lot, but a little newer. A couple of them, not quite, but there are some, you know, big price tags. Try to include notes where appropriate, while there are pieces that could be MSA paid for related, in the Hunter's area, that kind of thing. So, yeah, it's a tough nut to crack, but we thought by boiling it down to something that I think is manageable for the purposes of our, approving our budget tonight, that goes to the county, we thought this was the best approach. You'll get all the detail you want at the next meeting, but as Brian said a couple of times as we were meeting, you know, the budget is the budget. I mean, we got about 400 or 500,000 in that neighborhood. Those two are right up the alley, one of those, '22 or '23. We're recommending the enchanted be to '22, but it's kind of the same. I mean, I understand the desire to maybe add some more money now versus the cost going up later. I'm fine with that, but again, you'll get a crack at changing that before December, but for the purposes of tonight, we wanted to say, you know, we got a couple of projects that are about the same price. We think one is a little worse than the other as far as how old it is, and this is probably the best bet for the overlays for '22. So it's going to get harder down the road, but it's, it's still a lot of stuff to do.
I think that we've discussed this, so if we would add the 50,000 back into the levy as Council's suggesting, it basically raises it about a percent, 5.53 versus 4.52 is basically what we do for a preliminary levy, and that's obviously for the Council to decide.
And then factoring in the 3.5 growth, it's really like a two-something, you know, so.
Correct.
Still not bad, a 2%. It's still not bad, but that's not to say that we can't keep looking at it between now and December.
Sure.
Yeah, because this is the ceiling, as I was, you know, as we're going to understand. So, yeah, you can always, but yeah, if we set it at the 4.52 tonight, increase, that's it.
That's it.
Yeah, it can't go up, you know, but if you set it at the 5.53, and if you want to bring it back down a percent or something different, a half a percent or three quarters by December, obviously that's Council's call and up to direct staff, and if there's something that we find out between now and December, that's, you know, whatever that we're not inclined for right now.
Okay. Is that the direction you'd like to go?
I mean, what do you want the road budget to be set at then?
I think it's eight, what is it, 850?
It's 825.
825, so it'd be 875.
So basically 875 would be the monk dedicated to roads for the levy.
Plus, the idea or thought is if we needed an extra 50, it would come out of the reserve funds because they're over 50 if we needed it. Then we may not, I mean, there may be other, other things that we can juggle between now and then too, and still bring it down.
I would like to see the October report. So I agree, putting it in and then looking at the report, we can always go down.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, when we get to the meeting, it would probably be just instead of, right now, the gross levy is 5,325, it'll be 5,375.
75, okay. So just make a note of that, and then when we get to that, okay?
I have one other quick question. On the permits, the licenses, do you think we're going to come in at the number for 2020? Don't we always talk about this?
I think the more interesting, well, the more interesting part will probably be if we, I know Councilmember Schumberlin had asked me about where we got for 2021, and we're just shy of three-fourths, we're like at 72% of collections right now. But the only thing that sort of threw into the wrench was that we pretty much ran out of many lots left in Woodland Cove right now. So I think, I think for 2022, we'll be fine, and for 2021, it's possible we've come a little short, would be my prediction, if I had to predict one way or the other, I guess. But we'll see, I guess. I mean, there's always the other, you know, remodels and stuff that, you know, obviously doesn't need a new, you know, a lot to, but obviously the new home permits are the ones that bring in the larger dollar loans too.
Other questions, comments? I think I didn't have any. All right. Are we, so are we doing a certificate in '22 for '21 and '22?
We are not doing an equipment certificate. We're doing the, we're transferring some money from the general fund to the capital fund to be able to fund at least our '22.
For '22.
Yeah, for 2023, depending on how, that may be a discussion of whether we need to do a small certificate. I mean, interest rates are still pretty low, but for 2022, we're not looking at doing that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right, then with that, I'll hand it over to Paul for the gun range discussion.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The purpose of tonight is basically just to have a kind of a high-level discussion regarding the gun range, and so I have some slides that I'll go through here. Certainly, if you have questions as we're going through, let me know. And like I said, the intent here is really to provide a high-level discussion, not to dive too far into the weeds. A lot of these things are unknowns, and I'll certainly point that out as we go. So, does everyone have this on their screen? So I'll just...
Not yet.
And then, while you're looking for that, when Paul gets to the portion of his PowerPoint that talks about some of the information on the community survey done in 2017, I'm going to interrupt his presentation just to talk a little bit about a few data points that are related to that. So it won't take very long.
Okay. So, just to give a little background about how we arrived at this topic, you know, this is something we have talked about in the past. I was asked to get an updated proposal, just so we can see what do the numbers look like today? And so I've done that, and I think, obviously, when we built the building, we moved in there in 2010, the intent was to have a gun range. It was built for that purpose. It was built to the international standards, so it's not, it's not space that's really usable for anything else. It's designed specifically for a gun range. So the intent from the beginning was always to someday complete that gun range. So to give a little background, many, many years ago, before we had the City Hall campus, we actually had a small outdoor range back behind where the new Public Works building is now. That was much lower back then. It was very convenient, because we could just take an officer out to the beginning or end of their shift and train, and it was our private little range. It was inexpensive, of course. A lot of rules and things have changed, and that eventually went away. And since that time, we have been utilizing the Minnetoka Sportsman's Club for almost all of our outdoor, well, all of our outdoor training. And so in the beginning, that, it's worked fairly well for years, but as you are probably aware, the Sportsman's Club membership has increased dramatically over the years, so it's very, very difficult to get time. Basically, we have to attend one meeting a year, and it's at that meeting where you have to present your training schedule to the board, and then they either grant you the dates or not. So for example, if, you know, we have thunderstorms or something and we can't go that day, we can't just say, well, fine, we'll do it next week. That date is just no good. So with that, we plan a couple of extra dates just for that reason, but it isn't as flexible or as easy as it used to be. And that's important, especially when you're hiring new staff, because you just don't know the exact timeline or what day you're going to go out there. So it can be difficult, because if we have to do that, then we go and we just share the range with anybody else that might be out there, which isn't, certainly isn't ideal, but we can't just take over the range, and if we didn't reserve it, we can't ask people to leave because they're paying members. So there are some challenges with that, but no doubt about that. Additionally, there are a lot of constraints for law enforcement training on that range, because you, you know, there's a lot of range rules that we have to follow as well, that just don't allow us to address some of the law enforcement practices that we would like to train maybe to a higher level or in more depth. And so that's always been a frustration as well. And so, as you know, police training is, has always been very important to us and to the public, but in this day and age, the demand for increased training and more in-depth training is more than ever. So it's vitally important that we continue to keep up and provide the training that we need to train or provide, and that we have basically the means to do that. So I won't go too deep into that at this point. The next slide is the community survey results, and I think I'll just let Mr. Barone speak to this. He can, I guess, shed a lot more light on this part of presentation than I can.
Thank you, Paul. For the Council, we've utilized Decision Resources, which is what they were called and now Morris Leatherman, they are called that now, but they weren't when we did surveys in 2011 and in 2017. So those numbers that you see in that PowerPoint are accurate, but I just wanted to talk a little bit about how they do their surveys, and if you have to, and they're on our website if you want to go take a look. But if you look at their surveys, they come up with a four-point response table that you pick, two positives and two negatives. They do it that way for a reason. They don't want people, as a lot of people do when they do surveys, to pick that middle, I'm not sure, kind of category. So they give you an option at the end, say, I don't know, or I refuse to answer, and that could be an answer. And it's generally a pretty small percent, but the way they approach it with the four-point is they'll add the two positive responses and the two negative responses, and then come up with a ratio, and the strength of that ratio kind of lends you to understand how important that is to people at being surveyed. So back in 2011, the question was, should the city of Minnesota finish the gun range? Strongly yes and yes were 2 and 20 for a total of 22, and no and strongly no were 34 and 35, so that's 69%. So that's why you see the 22% positive. That's a three-to-one ratio against it. And then, would you support a property tax increase for that gun range? And strongly yes was 6 and 45, so over 50% said they would support a property tax increase to finish the range back in 2011, and the noes were 36 and 8. So it was a little more than 50/50. In 2017, we asked the same question, since the gun range wasn't finished, and yet, and the answers were a little different. Should the city of Minnetrista finish the gun range? The strongly yes was 25, yes was 44, that's 69%, which is what you see in Paul's slide. The no and strongly no were 15 and 11 respectively, so that's 26. That's about a 2.7 to 1 ratio. The don't know, refused was 6%. And then a follow-up was, a question was asked of those that answered yes. In 2011, the yeses were 86 out of, they surveyed 400 people. So 86 out of 400, that's the 22% that said yes. The yeses get another question, the noes do not. In 2017, the N was 275, so that's the 69% of the 400 there is. How, we asked a slightly different question. How would, how should the city fund this project? Property tax increase, user fees, or a public and private partnership? Not surprisingly, the property tax increase was pretty low. This is Minnetrista. I mean, I'm not surprised by that answer. User fees were 62%, which is good to hear, but that would not, even if we built it, would not pay for all of it. The public partnership and something else, you know, you're looking at about 25 and 2, so 32% between anything that's not a user fee. So, and then the last question that was asked, if you answered yes to the first one, is how likely would members of your house use the gun range? And again, that was 56% of said very likely or somewhat likely, and 45% not too likely or don't know, refused. So I guess the bottom line is, I say, I think there's support out there, maybe not financial support. There was in 2011, but maybe not as much here, but given those options, I'm not surprised at those options. And knowing that, you know, I think we have an obligation, instead of having our cops train outside on some gun range that they get basically a week a year to do, and if it rains, they kind of get, they lose a couple of days or a day or two. I think it's worthwhile to pursue this, doesn't mean you have to do it, but you should pursue it. And as I also mentioned to the two new Council members during orientations last December, is that I wasn't going to sugarcoat this. This is, this is not going to be free. It's never going to pay for itself, but it's not going to be free. I think we can offset a bunch of costs related to getting this up and running. The first one being, we might have the Crime Prevention Fund, that would do a, you own share of the work to fundraise. That would, that's a big thing right there. And then the ongoing costs, obviously they're going to be there, it's a new business line for us, but it could be offset by not having to rent the gun range for a week, which isn't substantial, but we can also get some user fees from people showing up to use the range, and we do have to include that. That was not the case the last time we talked about that at the Council level. They've changed something at the state in St. Paul about having a public segment of usage, so we will do that. And then we could partner, or other agencies could subscribe for either working kind to staff it, or just pay a flat-out fee to utilize it. So I don't think it's a sunk cost to, on a year-to-year basis, to operate. There are some restrictions, as you'll hear about, but, and as we go forward, if you're interested in pursuing that. But I thought it would clarify the community survey. I think there is a lot of interest in doing it. Maybe nobody wants to pay for it with their property tax, but I think there's a lot of interest in doing this gun range. So Paul, sorry, I hijacked your...
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Barone. I appreciate your insight on these numbers. So moving to the next slide.
Paul, can I just interrupt real quick? Do you have any questions of Mike regarding anything so far?
Are we going to see specifics on the costs?
For the gun range? I'll get to some of that.
Eventually, I'm sure we will.
I would like to make a comment regarding the survey. This was done in 2017, and, you know, times have changed since 2017. And I think there are a lot more people are gun owners. I think a lot more people would be more interested in using the gun range, and I think any support that we can give our place right now is definitely a majority in the city. So, you know, the survey here just kind of, I think it underestimates where we would be at right now if we redid the survey. That's my feelings after we just went through the last year, year and a half.
I would agree. That's a good point. Thank you. So moving to the next slide, I have a title, Current Firearms Training Challenges. So, you know, I think I mentioned a couple of those earlier, but scheduling is a nightmare for firearms training. for firearms training currently because what we have to do is we pick six or so range dates per year and then we schedule everybody to go. So there's a handful of people that are working on any given day that are on their regular time. Everyone else is coming in on overtime. And as you know, overtime is a three-hour minimum. So three-hour minimum times, however many people that might be, you know, we have 13 officers currently. So if, you know, that could be anywhere from eight to 10 or 12, depending who's working. That's a lot of overtime every single time we have a shoot. The other thing is, with the scheduling pieces, there's time constraints with that. We have to take whatever time we get and we have to really work backwards. We have to design the shoot based around the location, the timeframe we have and so on and so forth. Overtime, I think I mentioned that already. It's costly to do it that way. Do we pay more in overtime than, than what the ongoing cost would be? Probably not, but it's certainly a big factor and that number is just going to continue to grow as the city grows and we add staff. Weather, certainly we've talked about that. And then training restraints, that's a big one. On a private range, you have to follow their same rules. There's no exemption for law enforcement and the ranges just aren't set up specifically to law enforcement type of scenario-based training, which is so important. So we currently do scenario-based training, but we don't use live firearms. And so I'll show you later in the presentation, there, there's an option, it doesn't have to be done right away, but there is an option to paint the blocks and then you have computer simulated scenarios projected onto the, the range itself. And so you're doing live-fire scenario-based training, which is about as realistic, what is as realistic as you can possibly get. That, that's the future of training. Everything's gone to scenario-based training. And it's been doing that for years and now in the last couple of years, that's become really the, the benchmark that we would like to get to. And I, I just think, it's not on here, but I just want to mention that, you know, there's, obviously, we have no choice but to have some level of public use and we'll talk a little bit more about that. I think that piece is important and there's different types of public use. But first and foremost, from my perspective, this range is important to me and to our department and to our community because law enforcement training is absolutely essential. And it needs to be quality, it needs to be consistent and it needs to be ongoing. And so there is no doubt in my mind that, the public piece aside, is it worth finishing this range for that reason alone? Absolutely, in my opinion. And I realize there's a cost to that, but without a doubt, this would allow us to train much more consistently and on a, on a ongoing and consistent basis.
Paul, I have a question.
Yes.
How many hours ideally would you want your cops training the gun range per month or for two months or quarter or whatever?
You know, it's, well, there's a couple of pieces to training. So currently, I think we have six range dates a year, which is just with firearms. That doesn't include simunition or use of force or any of those, Taser, none of that. So obviously that would be the minimum, but I think we could easily increase this because now we're not bringing everyone in on overtime. So some departments might do it monthly or every other month. So I, I can't give you an exact number, but that number would definitely increase. And rather than going to the range and spending two hours and, you can go to the range much more often and spend a half hour one-on-one with an instructor, which is much more beneficial than just having a large group of people, everyone doing the same thing. Okay, your two hours is over, see you in two months or whatever. The quality of the training and the, the attention to detail would, you, this would allow you to increase that dramatically. So did that answer your question?
Yes.
Chief, what's the cost to go to the, to go to the range? I mean, we must be paying a fee to use the property, to use their service, correct?
We are, but it's minimal. I, I think it's $100 or $200 a year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's very, very minimal. So not much of a, they do give us a, because we basically pay one membership fee in, in exchange and our whole department uses it for work purposes. That doesn't allow you to go take your family there or anything like that. It's just for work purposes, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a factor. It's really more the constraints of the schedule and the, the range itself. We talked a little bit about public use. Certainly, I think that's what's changed now. I think that's a requirement. There has to be some level of public use. And when we say public use, I think there's really two pieces to that. There's a lot of training that could go along with the DNR, youth firearm safety, things like that. I think that would be a great facility for that because we have a classroom and then a range right across the street or across the hall, rather, and, and an armory. So I, I see that there's definitely a need for that type of thing in the area. It's indoor again, so you can do this year-round. You're not constrained to just the, the warm weather months. And then certainly, public use, this is a piece that, again, this is kind of a summary tonight, so we won't get too far in the weeds, but there would certainly be some sort of range hours available to the public, whether that's, you know, eight hours on a Saturday and four hours on a Wednesday night, for just an example. I see that, something like that working. And obviously, the more of that you have, the higher the ongoing operational cost will be and we'll talk more when we get into that piece. But certainly this would be, if it were finished or when it's finished at some point, someday, I think, obviously, first and foremost for us, it would be an absolute blessing and would be very beneficial to us and the community, but also the public piece. I think it would get a lot more use than probably what we think, once people were familiar with it. I think we've talked a little bit about, I'm going to the next slide here, the process. So the first time we had this gun range discussion was back in October of 2017. At that time, the Crime Prevention Fund was very willing to help us or they essentially were going to fundraise for the purpose of covering the capital cost of completing the gun range. And so we had that discussion. At the time, it seemed as if the council was supportive of the gun range being completed, but I think the issue was the ongoing operational cost, because that's not, ongoing costs isn't really something the Crime Prevention Fund would be willing to do because that's just, that's not really their forte or what, or what they're designed to do. They're kind of a one-time, "Help me with this and then they're done and they're on to something else." So really what they were looking for is a commitment from the city that if, if we raise this money and we finish this beautiful gun range, it's an asset to the city and the community. So we obviously want some assurance that this, you're going to use it. It's not just going to sit there idle. So that's kind of how it ended at that point and we haven't really discussed it since then until tonight. I'm going to the next slide here. Like I said, the building, we moved in there in 2010. The range was obviously, that piece was built with the anticipation of completing that at some point. And so I guess I'll skip to, for time's sake here. Basically, with the structure that we have, there's two range types that would work in there, a granular trap range and a, a block trap range. When we look at both of those, based on what we, the projected use would be, we feel that the block trap range would be a better fit and there's a few reasons for that that I'll get to. So if you want to go to the next slide. This is a granular rubber trap range. This is your standard range that you would see if you go to a public facility like Stock and Barrel or Bill's Gun Club, those types of things. These are generally designed for very high volume use. So federal firearms training facilities use these. Most public facilities use these. Stock and Barrel has this type of system and they're designed for very, very high volumes of usage. They're great. They require, well, they both require maintenance. This particular style of range requires more maintenance and it's not something that we can do ourselves. You have to hire a company to come out and do that. But we don't think this would be the best fit for us. This also has a little bit larger footprint. If you go to the next slide, you'll see some pictures of this block trap range system. And essentially, I won't go too far into the weeds, but behind this, there's steel plating and then there's some layers and then you can see those, on the right, there's those rubber blocks essentially. So this does a couple of things. First of all, you can shoot at very close range in here. You can also turn, if you see that aisle down there, you can shoot straight ahead. You can also shoot sideways, which is important for law enforcement training, not just some paper target hanging just in front of you. You have the option to have different directions. And this is also a very safe system because there's, it eliminates ricochet. The bullet essentially goes into that rubber and just gets trapped in there. The next slide gives a little bit more detail about that. I won't go into all of these unless you have questions, but this system would certainly work. We could fire our rifles in that range. It's not ideal because it's, it's not a very long range, but you, you could do it for some of the training. Also, the armorers could clean and, and repair and, and do things like that and then sight in rifles. At least the initial piece, just to make sure everything's working properly in there. It would work for all the handguns we would ever need to use or the public would use. But I guess the beauty of this system is, has the smallest footprint. It's also the cleanest range system you can get because it, things aren't ricocheting. The bullet doesn't hit something and ricochet, which puts lead into the air. And the ventilation system certainly can handle that, so you're not breathing that. But this is by far the safest or the, the cleanest system. And I mentioned earlier, you can paint those blocks white so you can project your screen on there for scenario-based type training. And I'm not going to go into a lot of the other details on there. So the next page is the cost. So we got a proposal from Range Systems, which is a very big organization. They're one of the, there are several that do this. This one has done a number of ranges in our region. And so the total cost is about just over $350,000. You can see of that number, just over $100,000 of that is the ventilation system. So what we have next door is just a shell. It's cement built to the international standard, certain blocks and depths and they're filled with sand, so on and so forth. So all that's in place, but that's all it is, just a shell. So it would need the ventilation system. And then the live-fire training system I was talking about is listed below as an option. That's about $50,000, but again, that could be added at any time. So these are capital costs that we're looking at here. And that's a pretty firm number. That's a recent quote. So that isn't really going to change too much, depending on the timing. Certainly if, if we waited a few years or something to that effect, the numbers would inflate as, as they do.
Paul, is that the amount then that we're looking at for fundraising?
Yes, that 300, just over $350,000. If we're, if the fundraising goes well, it's possible to, to raise the additional $50,000 for the live-fire training system as well would be ideal. I will, just one note on that is there are ranges around, not a lot, but there are. If you added the virtual training system piece to that, there would be a lot of law enforcement agencies that would be very, very interested and willing to pay to utilize that piece. So that would be a very, again, I don't think we're going to make money, but we certainly wouldn't lose money on that piece. Moving to the next slide. This is really the hard part to, to narrow down and it's, it really has a lot to do with the ongoing operational costs because there's a number of reasons for that. So this is kind of a worst-case scenario guesstimate. And I'll call it guesstimate because we don't know. It was really no different than when we first moved into our new building next door. We had to try and set a budget for things like natural gas, electricity. We just didn't have a good handle on that because we'd never been there and we hadn't utilized it, so it's hard to know. These numbers are, are high because they're based on commercial ranges that are open, you know, some are open five days a week, some are open seven days a week, eight to 10, 12, 16 hours a day. Certainly that's not going to be the case for us. Your ventilation system in a range only runs when you're using it. It doesn't run all day, every day. And so that piece is really hard to narrow down. Obviously, the more you use it, the more those costs are going to be. And when we get to a point where we start getting closer to decision-making time, we can see if we can't do something to try and get a better handle on this piece. But all of the experts in this field I've talked to said, until you decide how much you're going to use it, what you're going to allow, what you're not, that's really a difficult number to come up with. As far as the maintenance of the system, we talked about the two different types of ranges. The block trap range is actually easier to maintain because it, it encapsulates the bullet or the lead piece in the block. So essentially, if you have multiple lanes, you're going to have certain areas of those lanes that get more use because people are going to primarily be shooting at that particular area behind the target. So you're going to have a few blocks on each lane that are going to show more wear and you can simply put on gloves and a mask and go and pull that block out, put a new one in and then just set that block aside somewhere until you get enough where you have to pay someone to dispose of those properly. But the, as far as the block replacement goes, our staff can do that. We don't have to pay some company to come in and remove the block because the lead is inside the block. So they're not handling loose lead. So that's why a lot of agencies prefer this system as well.
Any questions?
Any questions on that?
Yeah, lots of questions. For me to take this, I, I take it seriously and I, I've talked to you about it before. I think it's a good idea, but a finance person has to get on this project and actually do a spreadsheet and estimate out all of the maintenance and costs so we really get a true handle on what the taxpayer will be, what the burden on the taxpayer is going to be. This is a start, but from a business standpoint, it's not deep enough or clear enough to actually get a handle on that. So if we can have that in-depth study, then.
You would also have to project the revenue stream too.
Yeah.
So that we can then, you know, revenues versus expenses. So that might be, is that possible to do without having the facility finished? I mean, can you get some kind of commitment from other agencies that might want to use it? Do we know what a fee structure might be? I mean, there's a lot of information that we would need in order to do that.
Okay. Basically, and again, I'm not putting this burden on you. I don't know if Brian would work with you or not, but, but basically, we have to have a spreadsheet that lists every single thing that could possibly come up that, that's going to go into taxpayer maintenance.
Sure.
Okay?
What I think from my perspective would have to be a, some, there's got to be other comparable facilities out there that we could use some benchmarks or, you know, or Paul would probably be able to have to help me with that as far as, you know, what other type of, what other municipalities or private ranges that are out there and what would be the similar size? And I mean, that's obviously when you're doing any type of analysis, you try to use comparables and things that, when you're not in that line of business yet, you got to use something to benchmark, so.
Well, that is exactly what the problem was with this and why I couldn't get really exact numbers. And I'm not saying we can't do that. Tonight was meant to be a, that kind of the beginning discussion. And so I think we can try and find a way to dive into this. The frustration, I think, was that there aren't a lot of comparables to what we're talking about because it's either a public range with very high volumes or I can think of a couple other law enforcement ranges that were built, but they're not open to the public. They're not this style of range either. They have granular traps and so they're used differently. But we can certainly, if, you know, if the next step, maybe that's the next step, is try and dial in these numbers so we know what we're talking about or looking at.
In any kind of project, any project at all, whether it's, it's a guess estimate, you still have to have the estimate. You still have to have something to work with. And we, the council, have to be able to say to the residents of Minnetrista, "This is what we really think it's going to cost." We, we have to do that. And right now, with what you've given us, it's nowhere near what needs to be done to dial that down.
I think what, and I, I think we would get there, but I think what staff wants to know is, do we want to take that next step? So this is kind of the 30,000 level right now. These are total, I mean, I know the numbers aren't anywhere near what they should be, but do you want us to dial this down and give you more details? Are we, are you interested in that? At what point, and I know Mike Malater used to do this a lot. He would say, "Okay, at what point do you want to do this and at what point do you not want to do this?" That, that would, I can just hear him saying, you know, and I think that might be too a good point to give to staff, saying, you know, if it's going to, if the revenues will offset the cost and the final dollar... the cost and the final dollar amount to cost to taxpayers is 15,000, 20,000, whatever that amount is, we could live with that or we would seriously look at this. So I think maybe giving them some kind of direction would be good at this point? Because right now, we don't know anything.
Yeah.
And to say no, we, I don't think we want to do that.
And I'm not saying no at all. I'm just saying, and I can't even set it at 15,000. I have no idea. I have absolutely no idea. I need to see something.
Yeah.
I need to see numbers. Also too, about the survey, can we do another survey? It's four years later now. It's going into the fifth year.
Five years, but it would cost money.
Yeah, they're not cheap.
How much money does that cost?
Well, the last one was somewhere between 20,000 and 25,000 dollars.
That much?
Yeah.
For 400 people? I could do knock on doors and do that.
You could, but it wouldn't be statistically valid, random sample of the community. It would just maybe be 400 of your closest friends.
Okay.
So I'll go...
What's wrong with that is what Anne is saying.
Nothing, but they may agree with Anne more than they represent the public. I'll go back to the process page that Paul had in his, it said in the fourth bullet, "In 2017, the council supported the completion of the gun range," I think we're hearing that tonight, "with fundraising dollars, but did not support the ongoing operational costs associated with the project." And I think as Paul mentioned and Lisa just reiterated, this is the first step. We're at 30,000 feet. We're trying to gauge from this council. Sounds like you still would like to explore the option of having a gun range, but you need more detailed information. So if that's the case...
Yes.
Then you should tell us, please, staff, go back and start working on this. Have no idea how long it will take, but we can certainly, as Paul said, there are some constraints, limitations, however you want to say it. This is not a very popular style. It's a style, but a lot of people, because it's a, a lot of the gun ranges he's familiar with are more high-volume, they use the other, the other system. Same with the size of our city. But, you know, there's a, there's a lot of factors that we'll have to get our arms around here in order to provide you with something that will allow you to feel comfortable in making a decision, yes, we want to do the gun range or no, we don't. So that, that is, I think, where we're at to summarize. I don't know if you guys feel any different than, than what I've just summarized or Paul's.
Well, I think we need the numbers.
Agreed.
And so that staff is going to have to do some work on that so that we can determine that. And in your research, you're going to have to find out what do other gun ranges charge, you know, so that we have an idea what the revenue streams could be, what other police departments might use it, and how, the other thing I know we talked about back in 2017 is that other police departments could actually come and help man it so that maybe they could help offset those costs. And what are the, you know, what is, how would that look? And would that, or would it be better just to charge them and, and do the work ourselves? I mean, so those are different things that you'll have to bring back.
Right. Yeah, this is a lot of the discussion I've already had with other agencies. Nobody's willing to commit to something that's a maybe.
Right.
To be honest, this was meant to be a summary. These are worst-case scenario based on commercial ranges. Someone said, well, we'd have to find some comparables, and there aren't any comparables to what we're talking about that I'm aware of. Now, maybe somewhere in the country there is. We'll do our best to do that. And then I think we'll have to pick some, in order to get you some solid numbers, I think we're just going to have to randomly pick, you know, is it going to be 12 hours a week of public use time? We'll just grab a number and use that so that we can, I can start to get some of these experts that understand the numbers. I have to give them some data in order for them to calculate anything, so, but I think we can maybe narrow this down better than this if you're interested in proceeding in that direction. And that's kind of what I'm looking for tonight.
Okay. And then one more point.
Yes.
Please address, I'd like the staff to address this. Please list the gun ranges that are available in this immediate area and why it doesn't work to go to them. That should actually be recorded, okay?
Sure.
What do the local gun ranges charge for general public use?
Okay.
It varies. I think Stock and Barrel, if you're not a member, it's $23 a lane and then per person. So if you share a lane, it would just be double that, which isn't a lot, in my opinion, but, and there are a couple, I'm trying to think. Stock and Barrel is the biggest. They have one, a place in Chanhassen, one in Eagan. Bill's Gun Range over in Robbinsdale is a similar, it's 20-some dollars, I don't remember exactly if it's a couple more or less. That one's been there for years and that's about all I'm aware of for indoor ranges. I think over in Shakopee, next to the casino, there is a indoor firing range as part of that complex as well, not in the casino, but one of the buildings next door. And I think those are about all the indoor ranges I'm aware of.
Yeah, I think Eden Prairie, Dyna, Ridgefield, and the airport sheriff facility that's located near Breymar.
Yep.
That was constructed, geez, 15, 20 years ago.
Yeah.
And there's actually two ranges, one large, one small. Does that sound familiar, Gary?
I think that's...
Yeah, you know, but they, but they, joint powers agreement to share those costs among the cities for their, their departments.
That's a public safety training facility, so it's for police and fire. It was built for that purpose. And then they have some public use as well.
Yep, they're shooting for public. It's also, they got a fire tower so that you can light a fire and have firefighters trained to put out a structured fire.
But that's a large facility.
Stock and Barrel is the one I'm most familiar with. It's a $200 membership, and I don't think you even pay that per year. I think you just buy the membership, $200. And then it is, I've paid $30 there, but okay, fine. Somewhere between $23 and $30 per. And so we need a spreadsheet that shows how many hours you're going to be using it, what the membership would cost. We need to have all that done out.
Sure.
Okay.
And they would be estimates. I mean, and the other thing is for convenience, I mean, if we had one here versus having to go to Robbinsdale or some other place, people might be willing to pay a little more too, just because it's so, it might be, people that live here might say, well, 10 minutes up the road and I can use a gun range versus having to drive half an hour to Robbinsdale.
I can go down that path very easily.
Yeah.
Very, very simply, very easily, and that's part of the reason why I'm backing it. But at the same time, we have, we have to face our residents.
Sure.
And say, this is what this is going to cost, and this is what you're going to be footing out of your taxes. And we need to be able to say that with some, some degree of confidence.
Right. Sure.
Estimates have to be conservative enough that I've seen too many examples where, you know, cities end up subsidizing activities based on maybe overly aggressive, you know, because you just don't know what your participation level is going to be. So I think the council's got to be know, and I think what we get on board must got to be conservative and hopefully you outperform that, but you don't want it to think it's going to cost us $25,000 a year and it costs $50,000. I'm just, you know, for hypothetical.
Yeah, exactly. That's exactly right.
Yeah, I think we also need an estimate of what other departments would pay, just a conservative estimate of what we would charge them to use it, to add that to it. And then on here it says labor and disposal fees, just get an estimate of what you think that would be on a yearly basis.
Right, and I'll do my best to do that. I wanted them to give me some numbers, but they pretty much refused because they said until we talk about the amount of use, we have no idea. We're going to give you a range that's so enormous, it's useless. So that was kind of a thought at the time, but we can dive into that. And I think it's important to focus from my perspective, you know, we're talking about building a range that's going to work for us and the public will use it on a limited basis. Certainly when we're talking about going to other ranges, that's important, you know, available to the public. That would cost me more overtime to send officers to other ranges, so that certainly isn't a piece of the, we would continue as we are before we would do that because it would cost more than what we're doing today with overtime alone if I had to pay them to drive to various places.
That can all be built into the spreadsheet.
Yeah. Well, I'd say with labor and disposal, just base it on how much you guys would use it with minimal public use until we see how much public uses it.
Right, and I'll be able to get them to give me some solid numbers once I give them some data. We just didn't, they weren't really interested in doing that until we had this first discussion to figure out. If there's no interest whatsoever in going any further, then they, they weren't interested in doing that, but I'll get the numbers for you.
And Paul, in terms of public use, I would think you could somehow figure out how many hours at least to start with it would be feasible to do, because it does take staff to staff it or whatever. So I'm sure you could come up with a number, just say, you know, starting out, maybe we do 15 hours or 12 hours, whatever it is, whatever you think is feasible, so.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. So I really don't have much more. The, the next slide is just utilizing current staff to staff this. Quite frankly, I don't know that that would even be feasible because you'd be asking staff to work above and beyond their current duties. Realistically, you would hire part-time employees to do this at a lower rate than what's listed here. And a lot of times those might be retired people that are, they like firearms and firearms training, things like that. I think there would be interest from people that are certified that would be willing to do this type, type of thing on a part-time basis at far less than we could do it with our own staff in-house. Not that we couldn't supplement it, but I think that would probably be a better route. So I won't spend a lot of time on that because again, these are all guesstimates because we really don't know what that looks like. So I think we've, the last slide is just next steps. So I think we've come up with that. So I will certainly pick some numbers and some times and gather the data you're asking for and we'll come back at a future date.
Okay.
But it won't be in two weeks. It'll take some time.
Yeah. And it doesn't need to be staff when you guys are using it, right? Just the public?
Right, just the public, yes, correct. Our, we have our own firearms trainers, so we'll take care of this.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Paul.
So next we have broadband discussion and update.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. At the previous work session, you, the council reviewed the draft lease agreement with some of the requests from Lakeside Networks in extra time. So I revised the agreement to include a few provisions, the city to cover the cost of the required inspections done by Badger, a rent-free lease amount for the remainder of 2021, a term of five years, and then removing the requirement for the provider to serve City Hall. In addition, the city would pay for the electricity, but this is pretty standard, so I didn't include it in the agreement. I sent the revised agreement, which I included in your packet, to both providers. Lakeside has accepted the terms of the revised agreement, and I spoke with them and they are looking to get on Sunny Field by the end of the year, Sunny Field Tower. So I sent a final review to Bob Bowes, and I'm hoping we can get that on the next meeting agenda. So Extra Time, as you can see, did not accept the terms of the agreement, and I included their comments in your packet as well. I sent the letter for a request of support to surrounding representatives and received responses from Kevin Anderson and County Commissioner Dean Phillips' office. After receiving a response from Kevin Anderson, Mike and I met with the Director of Broadband and Digital Inclusion. I think this is a new department and department head, so he was just kind of trying to grasp what what Minutrista's state of broadband is. So I think next steps as far as requesting support would be to narrow down what we're requesting. And a good, I think, upcoming request would be as far as the deed border-to-border grant, whether it's a letter of support for both, some funding. But again, as you can see later in the staff memo, we don't know what the timeline is for that yet, so.
But the deed grants, I'm sorry to interrupt, Emily, but the deed grants, I think those were end of September.
They haven't released the 2021 dates yet, so we don't even know.
Oh, okay.
So they have that in the mail?
Generally it's September.
Yeah, because I asked MediaCom if they received any dates and they hadn't, and I checked their website and it's still the 2020 information on there, so.
The other thing with the county, I think we should decide what we want the county to do and actually do an ask.
I agree.
Because we can wait and wait and wait for them, but it might be a while. So I, I mean, I think we should put together a, an ask and say, this is what we would like you to consider, please help us out. I mean...
And like I stated in my memo, I think, you know, getting a total of what Phase 2 may cost.
Right.
That may be a good place to start.
Yeah.
So, and then I just included an update on the current project, and the completion date is still December 31st, but I'm thinking they'll be finished here late fall, early winter. But their completion date is December, so.
Okay.
I don't know if you got anything else to add, Mike, but that's kind of...
I don't think so.
Where we're at, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, extra time, they're kind of talking both sides here because one, they're saying, oh, it won't work because if another provider is on the same tower because there's not enough space. But then on the other hand, they're saying it's too expensive, they don't want to pay that.
Right.
So I don't think it's really the space. I think it's the money.
Yes, and you know, Mike and I spoke, and staff would recommend holding firm on our original offer to them and providing funds for inspections if needed, capped at $10,000. I did ask, we're trying to figure out if space is an issue, if the channel frequency is an issue. So I've been trying to research who would know this and how would they know this. So hopefully I'll have that by the next meeting as well to see if that's a legitimate concern or if they're kind of using it as a...
Yeah.
Negotiation tactic, so.
Do cell phones have, they have a different thing?
I think they have different frequencies, but that, that was what Mike and I discussed as well, is there's three cell phone providers on one tower.
One power, right.
And Lakeside didn't seem to have an issue and thought it would be fine. So I'm not sure what Extra Time's hangup is on that.
Yeah, and remember, AT&amp;T and Verizon have internet service.
Right.
So they may have people on board who could answer that question.
Right, yes.
But I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah.
Does Lakeside want to use the new tower too when it's done?
Say that again.
Will Lakeside want to use the new tower when it's done?
They said they want to eventually get on all three, but by the end of the year, Sunny Field. So I imagine the next two will come in 2022, 2023.
Okay. So I guess my question then is, what is our next step with Extra Time, if any?
You just wait?
I'd recommend...
Change your mind?
I mean, if space is an issue, they should get up on the other two by then in the year. And then Lakeside can't go up there.
My, my suggestion to Mike this morning was, there are a couple of reasons why they may have come back the way they came back. A normal business negotiation does go a couple rounds, and you want to get whatever you can get in a, in a deal. So it is my suggestion that you go the next round with them and find out exactly where the spots that they've asked for can go without hurting Lakeside. You know what I'm saying? So in other words, go through their points and talk, talk through their points with them to see what they're willing to give in on back and forth. So it's another, it's another negotiation.
Sure.
And then, and then, and then that's, that's the next round. And then tell them, have you told them that Lakeside has accepted everything?
No, but they know we're offering it to Lakeside, no.
My, my thought process is that if Lakeside has definitely come back and said they're going to take it, then I would tell Extra Time that.
Mm-hmm.
And in the negotiations, see where they're going to land.
Okay.
And then that, that, that helps us formalize.
Sure, and you're not willing to give anything in the moment.
Right.
So we're just going to hold firm, let them know we're offering it to Lakeside while we're not lowering the cost and see what they say.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's, that's my suggestion.
Give it a try. I mean...
Can't hurt.
Why not? Like I said, you can't get anything if you don't ask, right?
My personal take is that Extra Time oversold themselves. I think, I think this is more of a delaying tactic because if we gave them what they wanted, I really don't think they're ready to, to take on the city and try to put microcells in all the area. That's just my feeling from reading all the data and the back and forth with them. I certainly would support the deed grant issue and continue that and see what we can do with Lakeside.
Okay.
All right.
I agree.
Okay. I, I have, from Jim Reinhold, I have a request to know where Northview Drive stands as far as the coverage.
He is right up there.
As far, say that again?
Are you talking about MediaCom coverage?
Well, any coverage that is better than what he has.
Yeah, well, he, in the past, we know Mr. Reinhold's in his request from the past. This is not a new topic of conversation for staff in regards to this. So, but I don't think the answer's changed much if it's MediaCom, but.
I did speak with Jimmy Milley this morning.
He's right there.
Yeah. I don't think it's changed much, right?
MediaCom, Northview Drive is included in the border-to-border grant that MediaCom is.
Right.
Because all I've asked is, I saw the status updates on Otsoil in Farm Hill. And I wondered, where is, what is the status on Northview? Because they have not had any construction on Northview Drive. And the update said construction was underway. So I wondered, where is it? Is MediaCom?
Personally, I don't know, but we can certainly find out, Jim.
Yeah, and I emailed Zach about the project and copied you on that email. So he's, he's who I get the updates from, so we're kind of waiting on Zach to respond.
Yeah, that's the MediaCom person.
And according to the deed grant that they received, they have to have it completed by December. So obviously sooner than later is better for you. But if they, if it's the end of December, that could be the latest.
And I can, I'll push Zach for a quicker response, but he's usually pretty good at responding.
Thank you, because my experience with MediaCom is they say things.
Well.
I don't think you're alone.
But if they don't do this one.
In this case, I don't think they're allowed that.
No, no. So I'll, I'll have Zach provide you with a better update.
So you're fairly sure that, that he's going to have service before?
If he's a address listed, yes, otherwise MediaCom's in big trouble by the state, yeah. Yeah, it's not a city project, it's in the city, but we're not facilitating it.
So Northview is very definitely within the MediaCom project?
Yes, and I'm assuming they weren't included in the update because there's eight addresses. Whereas Halsted, there's about 30, there's about 30 on Farm Hill. So I'm assuming Zach just didn't specify.
Yeah, that's a better answer than I was expecting. I was expecting us that we were going to have to tell you that you had Lakeside Network or, or Extra Time. There you go.
If you're on the MediaCom. Let me specify, if his address is on the project list, then all this is true. If it's not.
Oh, so we still need to check that?
I, I think you said you were.
Northview is on, Northview was granted, I read it.
Okay.
I read the grant.
Okay.
Okay, then yes.
Okay. All right. All right, so next we have, anything else on broadband then? Stan have some direction?
Nope, that's it. I will follow up and maybe, once we get the deed dates, we can maybe firm up a request from the county and/or state.
But do we want to ask the county for funding even without the deed grant? Because they have fund, my understanding is the county has funding. And then there's the deed grant funding. So it sounds to me like there's the two sources. So yes, we should be following up regarding the deed grant funding, but I think we should also do an ask to the county.
Sure.
Letting them know that here's how much area we need covered and this is the approximate total cost. How can you help us out?
Well, why don't I find that cost? We could get a letter maybe put together.
So Mayor and Council, when Phil Essington, who Ally just described as the Director of Broadband and Digital Inclusion at the county, we had a Zoom call with him, what, a month ago?
Yep.
Seems like, roughly. And I asked that question, I said, what kind of financial support can you give us? And he didn't give me an answer. So, because I think for a couple of reasons. One, he's new to the job and this department or division is new in general. And I don't think he knows exactly how much money he's gotten, how he can give it away and who he can give it away to and in what way can he give it away. I think it was just a lot of unknowns for the guy. But he was trying to do his due diligence to find out what's going on within Hennepin County and specifically in, in kind of our neck of the woods. So we, I asked, I didn't get an answer, but you know, we certainly could in, in a future correspondence with their office, say we'd like to have blank, blank amount. You know, doesn't hurt to ask.
Right, right.
I think it'd be nice to know what a cost for Phase Two and Phase Three would be separately and we can kind of go from there.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
Don't we have an idea what Phase Two is for MediaCom?
We, we do somewhere. Yeah, we do somewhere. I would have to look, dig that up, but that's what I'm saying, I don't know it off the top of my head, so I could definitely bring it back.
Okay. Because then we might also know, I mean, if there's, if they say, well, we can fund X number of dollars, we can then figure out where else we can get dollars and how much we will want to be contributing. And the ARP dollars might come into play for that. And the other thing with the water infrastructure, they might come into play for that as well and we'll have that discussion too, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So next we have the Susan Lane CUP discussion. Who is taking that?
I can certainly talk a little bit about that. We did have, I did have an opportunity to email John Leonard from Redemption House roughly a month ago. And he, as I mentioned to council in an email I sent this morning, he did reply to that. And I included that in an email to you all this evening. But I also roughly, an hour before this meeting started, got another email from Mr. Leonard. And I would like to share that with you as well. I don't think it really is going to change too much for our discussion tonight. So Mayor, if you want to hand one to each of you folks. You can certainly take a minute to read it.
Are you going to read it aloud?
No, I don't think it's going to do me any good to read it aloud. But I, I might just give you a minute to kind of skim through it. Also, as you're reading, just for some information, did have a chance to talk with our city attorney about this tonight. And I don't know exactly if somebody on the council wants to start the discussion tonight about it, but I do have a kind of recommended action that I will be giving you all here after, after my discussion with Ron today.
They're kind of asking us to put the cart before the horse, though. If I'm reading this correctly, so they want us to give them a, a new CUP?
I'm not exactly sure if I took it as they wanted new CUP. So the original CUP outlined that they could have up to nine. And then within a year, if there were no issues, they could come back before the council and ask to increase that number to 13.
But what they're saying here, if the city council would work with us by increasing the numbers to 13 and eventually approving another CUP in a more rural area, we could move to another location. So.
So that's a lot of ifs.
That's a lot of ifs and that's a lot of unknowns.
I understand that. But I'm just saying, as far as this particular address at 7590 Susan.
Right.
The issue, the complaint that we got was stating that they believe, the plaintiff believed that there were more than the nine allowed. And so that kind of prompted the letter. And I think this kind of came to light based on the fact that they were doing a project on their property to fix up their driveway. I know I had Gary go out and check and talk with people out there and David as well. There wasn't anything that they were doing incorrectly as far as doing their project. You don't need a building permit to fix your driveway. Gary was trying to find out why, is that they were getting all these trucks kind of coming in and out? And from what I understand, as relayed to me by Gary, is that the substrate underneath the existing driveway was poor. And so when they were going to replace the driveway, they found out that they have to replace the substrate. So they're taking out all the bad stuff and putting all the new stuff back in. So when they were paying the money to, to the, to the home or to the company to actually put in the road, it was on the solid, more solid foundation. So that was the reason for the trucks. And you know, I was talking with Kathleen today, trucks and Willy Cole are kind of a real life. I mean, there's always trucks coming in and out. It's because we're a growing city, we've grown quite a bit over the last 10 years. This just happens to be a project that was going on at their property. So I don't think there's really anything in the actual project. I think people are just concerned that there's a lot of truck traffic.
You know, to offset that.
But.
But to offset that, they knowing the issue with the residents, the neighborhood, what they should have done is just sent the residents a note saying, this is what we're doing. We're going to be improving the driveway, there's going to be truck traffic, please bear with us. You know what I'm saying? They, there is this, this contention in the neighborhood, they know that. And to try and avoid that, it would have been nice if they had thought about that. Obviously, you don't always think about that when you do a project. You don't necessarily think about your neighbors, but it would have been nice.
Yeah, you know, it could have, but I don't think it was a requirement that we have.
No, it's not a requirement, absolutely not.
So I don't know if Mayor or anybody on the council want to talk about this. Like I said, as you're reading the newest email from Mr. Leonard, I do have a kind of a recommendation to provide the council. If you want me to go ahead with that, I certainly can, but, but if you want to talk about it, certainly we can as well. I know we have a few minutes here, so.
Go ahead.
Well, my concern is we obviously have a formal complaint that's been filed by a resident. And so it's that person is making a statement. Obviously, it's what he or she saw or believes. And I take it at face value that it was an honest statement, not someone just trying to stir things up. That would be my opinion. Mr. Leonard has responded that it's not the case, from my understanding, reading the letter from the city and the letter from Mr. Leonard. I, to me, the resolution, not a resolution, but a next step would be, within the cup that was issued for them back in 15, there was the number eight step or number eight of the 13 things listed that said that the city could inspect the property. Did need to have a complaint or any reason, but certainly we wouldn't, the city wouldn't inspect, nor would I want people coming to inspect my property just on, for the hell of it, be a way to put it. But we have a complaint, so I would say the next step is to set up a time of Mr. Leonard's agreement and do a site inspection. That may not change the numbers. However, it also gives the city the chance at the time to see if there's been renovations made because that was also one of the things in defining the fact that Mr. Leonard said there wouldn't be any updating done, extensions, additions to property, et cetera. And if, as the complaint believes, there is more people down there than what was originally approved, there may have been improvements made to the property that would be obvious to the inspection. I just think that's a logical next step, from my perspective.
With that in mind, I may have David chime in here, but from what I understand, I don't think we could. The item eight that you mentioned says the city may inspect the property with notice, which means we'd have to tell them we're coming, we can't surprise them, obviously. And even when we get there, I'm not exactly sure who it is we'd send. We may send a CSO, we may send our building official, our building inspector, kind of depends. I'm not sure if you're going to be able to enter the structure, just like I couldn't enter your structure without your permission.
There was a site inspection done though back in 2015. I don't know who was involved in it at that time, and those people might not even be here any longer. But certainly at that time, to get the cup, a step in to be able to, for the planning commission or the council, whichever way it was, to be able to approve it, there was a site inspection done to be sure. I think at that time, probably some of the issue or the concern was, well, it's a residential house built for a single family, now it's becoming a multi-family, if you want to put it that way. So I think probably the building inspector might have been the person who went down there to be sure they had proper egress, had wherever the bedrooms were, did they have the, you know, whatever the fire code was. I would assume those were at least one or two people that went there. I don't know if anybody in the council was involved or do they need to be? But certainly there was an inspection done then with certain individuals. I would profess that maybe it's the same thing now.
I don't recall that, I don't know, David, can you recall that? Was there an inspection done in Bible?
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, there was, and at the willingness of the property owner, completely. Their willingness to work with the city and to go through that.
But I think what John is saying is it's a condition of the CUP, so he's just saying.
Well, I, I guess I'll wait, and if that's the direction of the council, I guess then I can chime in. I don't, I'm hearing, is that what everyone wants to go, or?
What do we legally have to do? I mean, basically with a formal complaint, what do we legally have to do?
Well, I guess that, based on the conversation with Ron today, Ron's direction was that he, he would wish to fully disclose the legalities behind this with the council. And what his advice would be is that allow him some time to provide you, the council, with, based on the attorney-client privilege, he would prepare a memo and lay out the legalities of all of this before any further actions is taken on the matter. That was his suggestion, as I've given to staff today.
Yeah, so when I spoke with him, he said that it would probably be in the best interest before we start going down rabbit holes looking for things, for him to at least give you his legal perspective on this entire situation. Because you're dealing with stuff that is based in federal law. I mean, this is not city ordinance, nonetheless, a CUP. But the stuff that, that kind of governs sober homes or, or places of this nature throughout the country is, is regulated by federal law. And it's, it's a complicated issue. And he didn't want you to jeopardize your, your, your position on the council in regards to pursuit of some matter until you at least heard him out on what it is that he would, he would tell you that, based on the law, what your course of action may or may not be. So I don't know if you're okay with that. It may be, not next meeting, could be the one after that. I know it may not solve the simple issue that we have before us tonight about the inspection or things of that nature. But you know, it may be able to clarify this issue overall a little better with, with a memo from Ron, if you're okay with that. I would hope you would be.
I, I would think we'd want to get some firm or some legal advice in order to know that we're standing on firm ground.
Right, I mean, that's the idea. I mean, before we start saying, you know, we're going to revoke your CUP or we're going to, you need to come before the council, which is kind of what we said in, in the first letter. And now with his email, both over the weekend and then again this late this afternoon about, you know, looking to, to move their activities somewhere else. I, I think this council might be well-served by getting an opinion from our attorney on this whole thing. And then chewing on it some more, so.
Are you saying not even addressing Mr. Leonard's letter from today then?
You know, when I got this, when I read it, and that's why I called Ron to see if, and I sent it to him just so he would understand it when we talked, is, I don't think it really changed anything today, it may down the road. But I think as of today, I don't think this, makes this any clearer for us. I mean, these sound like their plans, but as of today, they're still here in that house.
One of the things Ron would have to give us information on is my understanding that a CUP runs with the land.
Right.
So let's just say, they say, well, we have another lot, here's the lot, we would like a CUP for this lot, okay? This is a different area, okay? That still says that this property in your neighborhood can still be used for the exact same purpose as what they're using it for. So it doesn't really go away. It just might bring another, another one to the city. So that's one thing that we have to be careful of. So, yeah.
So that's a legal question from my perspective again. Then if they were moving to another site and relinquishing their ownership of this site, then is the cup rescinded? And if the cup is rescinded, does the land revert back to R1 designation or whatever it was?
Well, it still is technically, there's just a conditional use permit that's been recorded with the, the property. And it's, it's only good for one year.
Oh, the CUP is only good?
Well, yes, if, if they were to pack up and move today, someone would have to continue that operation as is within one year. After one year, it is no longer valid.
Yeah, but it could still happen.
But as a new owner, would they have to come before the planning commissioner something, being the cup was already there? They wouldn't have to.
Correct, it runs with the land, not the person.
Right.
As long as they're operating under the same parameters. But you know, furthermore, council, I mean, quite frankly, as Mike pointed out, it's this federal law we're talking about and one of these could go in. it's this federal law we're talking about and one of these could go in next to any one of you.
Right.
So just to point that out.
Chief, do you get a lot of complaints?
No, we don't.
I think we've had, uh, one complaint this summer, but it was about the traffic related to the trucks and like what's going on. And that was kind of early on, I think maybe June, if my, if my memory's correct, so.
But might, again, because you, the two of you weren't here, it might be worthwhile to have a discussion with Ron if it can be a closed meeting.
Well, I know for sure it cannot be a closed meeting.
Well, I thought you said it would be.
It would be a letter that he would send to you under attorney-client privilege.
Oh, okay.
But we would not have a meeting in closed session.
Okay.
Because of that, that I know, cause I asked.
I think that, that would still be beneficial.
Yeah, I mean, he'd be able to give you this one-way correspondence on his opinion on what's going on, what your options could be, if any.
Okay.
Or limited to, if any, so.
I, I think that's a good, a good route to go.
Okay. And, and I'll, and I'll, um, with David's help, we'll, we'll let them know about the, the late afternoon email from Mr. Leonard about, um, moving to a different location and how that may mean that there's two redemptions homes in.
Yeah.
Potentially Minutrista, which would not be something I'm sure this council would be in favor of, but, um, but as David just mentioned, it could happen anyway, so.
So let me ask you this, David. Can the owner of the property remove in and of themselves the CUP?
If they, if they agree to, yes.
Okay.
If they agree to rescind the, uh, conditional use permit, yes.
Okay, so, but like you said, anybody can come in and do something like this in your neighborhood or next to you?
Mm-hmm.
Except I think we have some parameters now, right? Or we did before?
Yes, we, we, we put a process to it.
Okay.
Correct. And, and again, it's, it's overarching guidelines is, is guided by federal.
Federal law, right. It, it has to do.
So we, we, we set up a process in our ordinance in which people have to follow in order to, to establish one, to, to make it more known what, what's happening and such. But at the end of the day, it is federal law that governs it.
So can that be part of Ron's explanation?
Oh, for sure.
I mean, for instance, if they move out of here, um, and move somewhere else? I mean, there's so many what-ifs in this letter. Where would they move? How would, where, what, what parcel are they looking at? How far away is it really from other homes? I mean, um, and then would they rescind the CUP? And I, I don't know. That would be questions for, for Mr. Leonard, I would think, that we would have to know if we were to even consider their offer.
Mr. Leonard, right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't recognize you. What we're gonna do right now is because we're getting short on time, you've heard the conversation, so, um, I would suggest you talk with staff and maybe have, give us some official, if you will, response to some of these questions that we've had. If you would do that, I appreciate that. Thank you.
My thought was that, um, if we were to move to a more rural area that wasn't so close to neighbors, um, and get away from the neighbors that really don't want us there, we could rescind the CUP before we move out and you guys could authorize another one. And it could potentially be a resolution to this situation. That would be a link to everyone.
And, and I don't disagree. I just think the council needs to know legally where we stand and what, what our options are. And, and then I think you need to put that in writing, um, so that we know exactly what you're asking. In my opinion, your letter that we received just now isn't clarified enough, I suppose.
No, that's just an email and it was just, uh, something to start a dialogue.
Right. So, um, council comments, questions?
No, I think we have a next step. I think Mr. Leonard's gonna take the staff and, and go forward.
Do you have another property in mind?
No. Do, do you actually want to move?
Well, uh, it's very difficult to live next to people that don't like you and don't want you there.
Okay.
And that are harassing.
Okay.
And, um, you know, addiction creates a lot of shame in people. These are people that are wounded, they're hurting, and they need to be loved and accepted, not rejected, right?
Sure.
That just piles on. And the thing to do is to meet people where they are and love them and accept them. I mean, addiction is tearing apart the fabric of our communities, of our country. I'm sure all of you know someone that has struggled with addiction. And, um, if you had a son or daughter or, or loved one or husband or whatever, um, and you were looking for a place to send them, you would want to be able to send them to a nice place that was well around them, was in a decent neighborhood, if it wasn't in, in a really difficult area of Minneapolis or whatever. These places are needed. We've helped hundreds of men overcome addiction and helped restore marriages, families and, I would hope that the council would have the compassion to work with us and embrace us in facing this difficult challenge. We are trying to help people.
We understand, Mr. Leonard. I think these are conversations that the council will have, not next time, but, um, in, in the near future. So do you have enough direction?
I believe we do.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I think our attorney's recommendation, um, to address these issues in a letter to council members will be, will be, I think, a good one.
Okay, and then, yeah. Okay, with that, um, I think that concludes our agenda items. Any other comments, questions?
No.
All right. That concludes our agenda, our work session agenda items. So with that, if there's a motion to adjourn, we can be adjourned. Thank you, Ms. Repkin. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.